All right.
Those allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for an employee. Uh, Mr. Dalton Hammer passed last week. We have a moment of silence. Thank you, have a seat. I'm sitting right in front of your mic. Thank you, um, moving on to roll call.
All right, Ronald Knapp.
Present.
Kenneth Hall is absent. Bonnie Almond is absent. Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glasson.
Here.
Judy Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Judy Kutzler.
Yeah.
Mayor Tony Pristash.
Present.
Hearing of persons present, if anyone has any comments, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and please speak into the microphone, Mr. France.
How's that? Barry France, North Hampton Fire Department Director of the Subber Cadet Camp. And I just wanted to, uh, update the, the council on where we stand for the cadet program. So we're ready, uh, we're ready to kick it off next Monday, the seventh. Uh, fortunate enough, we have twenty-five cadets registered, so we hit our number. Everything's pretty much in line, we have a couple of field trips planned, we're going to, uh, on Tuesday morning, we're going to the Whitehall Burn Building to have our few of our guys put on a burn demonstration. Obviously, the cadets will be safe, they'll be away from it, but show the cadets what actually happens when a truck rolls up to a building that's on fire. Again, more of that stuff we can do, I feel, the better it is. On Wednesday, we're going down to the, uh, City of Allentown, their fire training academy that's down there at Mac South Fire Station on Lehigh Street. Uh, we're taking the cadets down there for a tour of their building. They're more than happy to have us come down. They actually have a class going through right now for hazardous materials, so we'll have a chance to see some of that with the cadets. And then Thursday out, we'll be up at the pool, we'll do our water rescue. And then on Friday morning, we have, uh, the North Hampton Regional EMS coming over to do, uh, basic first aid and, uh, basic CPR. So it's really coming together. Uh, fortunate enough, we have a, a number of donations this year that's actually supporting the program, which is great. Uh, hopefully we get more of that next year, so, uh, it's turning out to, to be a pretty good program for us this year. So, again, just wanted to update and see if there's any questions from anybody.
Question?
Yes.
Question, comment, outstanding job, and congratulations on putting this together, the way it's growing and becoming such a outstanding entity that people will look forward to it and have twenty-five cadets.
Yep.
Future firefighters, but how do we transport them to certain areas, do, are they responsible?
No, we, no, we, we take care of all of that. So, uh, you know, we also provide them lunch, which is a big thing, and, and all the drinks they can, they can drink. We've got a lot of stuff donated again this year. We were running it to a little bit of an obstacle because we don't have the bigger rescue truck that we had in the past where we could put a number of cadets in there to move people, move the cadets to the, the field trip. So our smaller vehicles, we're kind of tight on that right now. I have a couple of resources right now I'm working on, it's probably gonna come down to the final minute where we're, uh, we're looking for, uh, Stellar Construction is looking to see if they can secure a van for us, a fifteen passenger van. And then we can, the rest of the cadets, we could take in our vehicles. The other possibility is we contacted ANA Limousine to see if they're willing to help us out. There may be a charge there, uh, Pastor Chad, uh, he's involved with that, he's trying to get us a bus, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that'll work out for us.
That's another thing, if you add transportation issues, to look for like the local land and different kind of bus companies.
Yeah, we might reach out to the school district.
Perfect.
Does, um, Jason from Hampton Lanes have that, that bus, I'm not sure if he still has that one available, I mean, it's just an optica.
Yeah, yeah.
If you stop in and talk to him, I know they had that before.
Yeah, basically, we need you for two days, you know, going up to the pool, if we have to run the cadets up multiple, you know, multiple trips, we can do that, that's not an issue. So it's just the, the field trips, and I want to keep the field trips in place, because I think the kids get a good, uh, they get a feel for what's going on at different locations, you know, one year we were at the, uh, the Lehigh Valley Airport, they got to see the, the crash trucks in their fire station. And we went up to the nine-one-one center a couple of times already. Last year, we went down to, uh, Lehigh County Emergency Management, we got to tour all of their, their vehicles down there, so. We'll let them into the coroner's office, but, uh, they, a lot of them wanted to go in, but we said no.
Thank you again for all the efforts that the whole team's putting together, they're outstanding.
Yep. Any other questions?
I thank you for that too.
Thank you.
Mr. France, I thank you for your dedication to the borough.
Welcome.
Second to none, but.
Yep, again, something I always wanted, something I always wanted to do, but when I was chief over in Easttown, I just didn't have the time, so. Now that, uh, you know, just a safety officer in charge of the juniors is kind of false in line, so again, our.
Just don't say that. There's much more, yeah, he's very modest.
Yeah, again, I think what we want to do, the whole, the whole idea of the whole camp is to try to encourage these, these cadets to take the next step and become junior firefighters. And we've been pretty successful so far, I think we have four to five that actually became junior firefighters. And again, if you look around at our, our surrounding municipalities, a lot of departments are hurting for people, and they trying all kinds of stuff, and we're lucky, we're fortunate to have the, the, the members that we have. And with the junior program is pretty strong, I think we have nine, nine or ten juniors in our, uh, on our department right now, which is great, so.
And graduation is Saturday morning?
Yes, graduation is Saturday morning, by all means, you're all invited, nine o'clock, we'll have coffee and donuts there, orange juice, uh, Representative Zach Mako is gonna be there, he has, typically gives out certificates as well, as well as the ones we give out, so, uh, the last two years, he's been there, so. We anticipate him being there again this year, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next, we're moving on to presentation by Mr. Tom Duffy of Gilmore and Associates.
Tom Duffy of Gilmore and Associates will be present to discuss the current state of sewer system and upgrades in the borough, as well as the Chapter ninety-four report and the future sewer plant upgrade.
This, can I just talk right here if you want me to present?
You can move the mic closer.
Okay. I know you, I know you also record.
Yeah.
Instream, so. Thank you, and I appreciate it, thank you for, for sending this on.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'm a big fan of photos, so I got a lot of pictures in here, there's a bunch of slides, I'll go over it. It's really just everything about your sewer system of where you've been and where you're going. I imagine the reason why you asked me here today is so I, I can answer how much capacity you have left, what will the upgrade cost, why are we upgrading the plant again? And when will the project be completed? That I think is on top of everyone's mind, I will get there, uh, but before I get there, I need to go over your, your system. There's a lot of background that I imagine being in a busy borough, having to deal with so many different things, landlord, renters, someone driving into a traffic light. Sewer is at the back of your mind, so I haven't, uh, talked in front of the council in the last couple of years, so I really want to back up and tell you where you've been. So also you know where you're going and how the upgrade fits in with, with everything else. Your sewer mains in your system, you have about thirty-five percent of it, it was built in nineteen thirty, so a hundred years old is your existing sewer pipes that you're using today. That, that's about thirty year system, uh, forty percent is almost as old, seventy years old. And then, uh, twenty-five percent is fifty years, fifty years is typically about one, uh, is PVC pipe. So that's more reliable, doesn't mean it's in great condition, just means that it, it's newer. Age matters for it, obviously, um, the joints in it, the, the materials used in it degrade over time. Uh, one thing I'd like to mention is that your entire system has about six hundred manholes. So if you replace six a year, it takes you a hundred years to go through the system. So I know a bunch of previous years, you replaced three or four, and it kind of felt like you're, you're doing some work, because it costs, you know, maybe four or five thousand dollars to not fully replace it, but rehabilitate it. But it, it, it still take you over a hundred years to go through that, and your existing ones are a hundred years. So just as far as to kind of keep in the back of your mind, you have a very aged, uh, collection system. That, that's your, your whole plant together, uh, your plant, your pump stations, and your collection system, but particularly, particularly your collection system. Um, that's important for the upgrade, because leaky pipes mean more waters coming into the sewage plant, means pump stations are pumping more. Uh, that gives overload of stuff, and you're also energy to pump it and treat it, you're treating clean, like right now. Your, your flow, your plant and your pump stations possibly doubled, and that's all due to the rain. In recent years, I've been a sewer engineer for about ten years, as far as I understand, in nineteen nineties, you did some relining. I never got like a, a list of how substantial the relining is, but as far as I know, that's the last major work that you did to your collection system, so that was thirty-five years ago. About five years ago, you did about a hundred thousand dollars to reline manholes, you got a grant for that. And the big news was, a year or two ago, you got a grant for two million dollars plus a million dollar borough match to reline all the sewer manholes in the Stewart Street Pump Station area, so that's three point four miles of sewer main and fifty-three manholes. If you remember, you have about thirty-five miles and six hundred manholes, so it's about ten percent of your system. The, I guess that cyan area is the area that we're relining, that's everything from the railroad tracks to the, the Lehigh River. The picture on the bottom left corner is a, one of your existing pipes there, you can see the aggregates all exposed on the inside, because it's broken apart over the years. And you can see the, the kind of black line there where the concrete pipe is actually broken apart, so obviously you're getting groundwater to come in there. Uh, the chart at the top left corner, the two blue parts, so, so a year ago, we had kind of unique circumstances, if you remember. In December and January, we had a whole bunch of rain, and then in the fall, we had no rain. So the blue are how much, uh, daily flow you had for those entire months during the wet months, and the yellow was the dry months. So one hundred thousand is your dry flow, and you get up to three hundred thousand every single day, so three times as much for the entire month, not just when it's raining, but the whole month long from groundwater infiltrating. So if you were able to fully address that, your flow in that pump station would go down by two-thirds. And that's why we picked that area to reline for your grant, because out of all your pump stations, that, that's the one with the most groundwater and, and I N I coming into your system. Overall, you have eight pump stations, the unique things about pump stations is why you have your gravity lines, they convey sewage for free. Your pump stations need someone to go there, check them every day, ideally, um, requires power for pumps, mechanical equipment, electric, all that stuff breaks down over time, you need to replace it. So this is just a, a list of your different pump stations, some of them are, are tiny, some of them are substantial. The bottom three ones that I have there, I'll go over each of them pretty quick, but you have spent money to upgrade those three past pump stations, the three bottom pump stations. Uh, the first one is the main pump station, it's actually located within the treatment plant, looks like a, a bunker, uh, has the, uh, the Hook and Dock River next to it. And that pump station, you can see the, uh, the rest of the treatment plant in the background, on the inside of it, uh, th- those are what the pumps looked like. At the bottom right corner, you can see the, the nuts on pumps have all cracked apart from rust. So if there's a blockage in that, that cannot be opened, uh, it's, it's like touching a piece of glass, like the, the pumps worked when they were worked, but you, tho- those were seventy years old. So the, the electric wouldn't work for that, the motors are, are separate, but the mechanical piece still worked. Now, how, how much the pumps were pumping, obviously, the, the mechanics inside it were, uh, good quality, if that's what it is on the outside. Uh, another thing I just mentioned at the pump station is that there's two hatches on the left side of the picture. Uh, the first one where you kind of see the, the ladder on going down is the wet well. So sewage gas was in that room, so the mist and moisture of sewage gas, and also the hydrogen sulfide. You, you occasionally of like, uh, operator goes in a manhole and passes out from the hydrogen sulfide and lack of oxygen. Well, that's a condition that you had in your pump station in your treatment plant. So to address this, we built a wall in the middle of the pump station, put the old electrical on the one side, put the wet well hatch and everything on the other side. Uh, that was completed in twenty twenty-one, and the bottom right picture is a picture of your new pump. The second pump station that we did, we finished like last year, uh, that's a picture of it, it's, uh, next to Sacred Heart Nursing Home is in the background. Uh, there's a lot of broken concrete on that pump station, uh, pumps were a little bit better condition, but still, uh, pretty old. The electric of it i- is pretty old, old electrical and mechanical are, are a problem, uh, just due to their age, because you can't get, uh, replacement parts. I know if you try to buy anything on your own, and I have my watch here, and, you know, the little band brakes, five years from now, I can't get that ever again, let alone what they have there. So that's always, uh, uh, an issue, even if it works perfectly fine, the fact that you can't get a replacement part and it needs to work all the time is a concern. Uh, you, you could see in, on the right picture, there, there's even a, a broken pipe there. The after picture of that pump station is here, we have all cleaned it up a lot, you know, the, the yellow railing, we, we did paint it after, that's not a final, final photo. So that, that's why that looks a little out of place, but everything else wa- was cleaned up, there, there's big pumps in the basement, and it's all, uh, clear and lit up, it's safe for the operators to, to work in. Um, and then next pump station, this is at Stewart Street and Canal Street, this one we put out to bid, we had the contractor, they did not do the work on it yet. But the work is very similar to the last pump station, as far as the, the scope of what we did, just mentioned a couple of little things about that. One is, at both pump stations, they have this ladder, and it's about twenty foot drop there, and I use the word drop. So if your operator going in, rainy day like this, at two o'clock in the morning, because there's a pump blockage, you have to climb, you know, with your wet boots and everything, climbing down that ladder. I mean, to me, that, that was a huge safety hazard, no, no one's got hurt on that that I know of, but still, and you can see in the bottom right picture, I mean, tha- that ladder wasn't even still mounted to the wall in the bottom, it was rusted away. Um, and that was both pump stations, so to address that, we, we replaced the, the ladder, we tiered the walkways in between it, so there's a couple of levels to get all the way down to, to make it safer. Uh, so once again, this was a picture of the last pump station, but the one that went out to bid that we're gonna be doing in the next few months, as soon as the contractor gets the, the pumps, will, will look similar to that. And then I'll get on to the treatment plant, which is the, the main thing I think everyone's interested in. The plant was built in nineteen twenty-eight, just like the collection system had upgrades in nineteen forty-six, fifty-nine, nineteen ninety. The important thing about that is some of the tanks and some of the things in beneath the ground is literally a hundred years old, and in multiple revisions to that. So there's a lot of rat's nest, uh, in, in that site. It, it would be much easier if you had a, a green piece of grass next to it, that we can build a, a new plant next to it and switch over from one to the other, but, you know, we're working with what we got. Um, your existing plant, the last major upgrade was in nineteen ninety, that was because of nineteen seventy-two Clean Order Act gave new discharge limits on your plant. In nineteen eighties, you evaluated what new, uh, processes needed to be built to meet the new limits, and in nineteen ninety, the plant was upgraded. So that's the last time substantial work was done at your pump stage, at your treatment plant, was in nineteen ninety. Uh, at that time, we evaluated out for twenty years, so the design life of that upgrade, the, the flows and everything were based on twenty-ten, obviously, we're in twenty-twenty-five now. So that, that's the capacity of, of your plant, it, it is still basically what it was in, in nineteen ninety. Uh, fortunately, there was a lot of extra capacity built in it at that time, so that's why you haven't been over capacity yet, but, but you've used it up since then. A reason why you're upgrading the, the treatment plant, if you look on the left side, that's the ceiling in your de-watering building, that's the concrete roof. You can see part of it is actually fell down and landed on the roof trusses there and some piping, and that's a big chunk of concrete, and it's, it's still up there right now if you go there. And if you even look around the edge of the pictures, probably can't see it too well, but there's other, um, roof panels there where the concrete broke away. So that's indicative of, of some of the conditions of your, your structures that are, that are aged. Uh, another thing that we need to accomplish is you, you've had a bunch of violations on fecal chloroform, uh, discharges into the, uh, creek. The picture on your right is your existing, i- it's your effluent tank, so that's basically what's going into your stream now. There's stuff floating in there, and that's not all the time, that's when I took the picture there, and that's why we took there, because it was a problem at that time, but it has happened a bunch of times. So you can see from the picture, there is the, the rusted scaffolding and, uh, baffled wall at the top. At the bottom, probably can't see, but the concrete has a bunch of exposed aggregate, and then obviously, there's, there's floating, uh, carbon, I guess, blocks in it, and the transmissive, transmissivity i- is not too well, so it's, it's not crystal clear, you, you can't see the bottom of the tank, not, not even close, you're lucky if you can see a foot or two. And, and that's what you're discharging into the stream as your, your final, uh, effluent. So the major, uh, components of the upgrade, what we're, we're spending all the money for, uh, these are the big, big ticket items. Uh, just go over them briefly here, and then I have a couple of pictures of each of them, so you know what we're, what the scope of work includes. Uh, new headworks equipment, the new SBR tanks, that's your, your main process tanks, new sludge building with de- de-watering equipment, that was the one with the, the roof. Additional sludge holding tanks, so you, you have more capacity before you de-water, UV disinfection and a, a tertiary treatment system. So the first one is your existing screen on, on the left, so what you have is just a series of bars. Um, you can think of it as like a comb, so anything that someone flushes down that is wider, uh, narrower than, you know, quarter inch or so, or, I mean, even this piece of paper, this, if this goes right through, it, it goes into your plant. The problem is with, with rags, is any fibrous material, even though it, it's little strands, it, uh, ne- nets together, and it becomes like a, a mop head. And then soon as that hits pump, it wraps around the pump, and now someone has to, your process stops, someone needs to pull the pump and, and pull it out. So that's one of the issues we're trying to replace with that, that screen. Also, it just, it has a mechanical arm that scrapes the, uh, bars and slops it onto the conveyor belt, and the conveyor belt goes straight into the, the dumpster. That's not great, because whatever organics, whatever you, you think is in sewage, just slops down and, and goes there. Your plant is meant to treat organics, it's not meant to treat fibrous stuff, it's not meant to treat grit. Organic stuff is good for the process, you want to get that back into the, the waste stream, and that's, uh, sample piece of equipment that we're looking at, a, a fine screen on the right side that has, uh, a much smaller, uh, screen to catch more stuff, as well as wash heads on the inside. So what comes out of that into the dumpster is a, a fibrous plug that you wouldn't feel too bad picking up with your hand. Also, within that building is grit, so like the way we want to get all the, the rags out of everything downstream to protect the plant, we also want grit out of it. Grit, uh, is abrasive in any pump it, it goes to, it fills up space within your tanks, it clogs up things. Your existing piece of equipment is on the left, and to the right is, you can kind of see the, uh, sandy floor, that, that's your tank, that's just downstream of, of your grit removal system. So it's not removing y- your, your grit. So we're, we're looking at a, a tray system, similar to that, it has, um, the big metal round tanks, those can be inside the building or outside. And then it, it goes into, uh, smaller dumpsters, so both of those would go within or adjacent to your existing headworks building. Then your SBR tanks, that's the main biological process, so the previous stuff was to protect your plant, this is the heart of your plant. You have three tanks, uh, basically, th- you have your bacteria in there that the bacteria break down the sludge. You give it air, you watch the pH, alkaline, other things, and the bacteria naturally will break down anything in sewage, that, that's the purpose of those tanks. Um, you can see at the bottom right that there is a pile of rags on it when they took down that tank for maintenance, and there's also, uh, grit a- around it. Those, uh, bars there, tha- that's what blows out the air. So we're looking at, um, a, a fourth tank, that's, uh, the picture there, I know it's a weird angle, it's, we took it with a drone. But i- i- it's a precast, uh, post-tension system, uh, whi- which is actually what your existing tank was, that they make the panels in the factory, and they come out and they deliver them, and they strap them all together with, uh, a post-tension and ground them in place and everything, so it would be similarish to that. And the top right is, uh, different diffusers we're looking at, ones that are a lot more effective and energy efficient. Back in nineteen ninety, no one cared about energy, they cared about, uh, process now with electric rates and everything. It's much, much more typical to put in a more efficient aeration system. Aside from sludge hauling, blowing air bubbles in your sewage is the most expensive operating cost you have. So what we can do to make that more efficient, uh, certainly helps the, the ongoing costs. The existing effluent, this is the effluent tank before, I mentioned that, uh, the carbon that was floated a- on the top of that. And to help clean up the quality of that effluent, uh, for that, we're looking for a, a disc filter, there's a picture of it on the top left, where once it goes through the process, the clean water goes through that disc filter as, as well, to remove if there's any carbon there, as well as, uh, smaller things to, to improve the, the quality of your effluent, and also, uh, help improve for your UV system. On the top right picture is a picture of your UV system, you can see i- it's not very transmissive. The light doesn't go very far, because it's, it's cloudy, there's rags and some things stuck on the bulbs on the top. Uh, there, the wires there, uh, on the left are very rigid, uh, the operators have trouble moving them, because they crack. You've actually had two burned up, or, or fires, you could say, to the wires that I know of, uh, in, in the conduits, in the ground, because the conduits are decades old. The wires are decades old, they're com- really tight in there, the conduits, uh, get crushed, and there's not enough room in there for heat dissipation, and the wires heat up. And there are two times I know that they actually did burn up the wires, and they had to, uh, run new wires for it. And now on the bottom, you can see the, the tubes where the bulbs are within, they just get caked on, and that, that, that doesn't simply wipe off. Uh, there is cleaning systems for the bulbs, so you get the transmissivity to kill all the bacteria in it. But with the quality effluent going to it, i- it gets caked up on the, the sleeves around the bulbs, a- and then it's just not very effective. And once again, you, that is the ongoing violations that you've had in recent years at the plant, is your UV system effectiveness of it. A new UV system, uh, two systems we're looking at, I think they noted about the right one, the right one's actually unique, that the sewage doesn't flow a- a- um, around the bulbs, the sewage actually flows in tubes and the bulbs are in air. Yeah, I think it's a, um, interesting thing that we're looking at, um, rather than having the submerged bulbs, the bulbs are actually separate, and you, you can just pull them out. A- as opposed to having stuff caught on the bulbs and having the, the, the tubes heat up and, and getting caked on. So that's all your treatment parts for what goes into the stream, but the second, or separate process, the other half of your treatment plant is your sludge. So everything in the treatment plant that is not clean, um, gets condensed into sludge, and in the picture there is your existing de-watering press. If you talk to the operators and you say, what's the biggest, uh, problem we have with our plant, what's the most stress, what's the most work that we have to do, it's that built throat of the press there. They run that six days a week, they run it all day about when they're there. That's the building where I showed you with the broken roof, is you can see there's not too much, uh, ceiling clearance there to add a bigger press, not too much width there, because that concrete and everything was built just for that size. Also, if you follow the conveyors outside the building, outside the building, it goes into that dumpster, as you can see on the bottom right corner of the dumpster, there's a whole bunch of boards and, and, and railroad ties to try to make it level. Years ago, they thought that, uh, farmers would back up their, their dump truck into it, and they would load it, and they would drive out. That went away shortly after nineteen ninety, and ever since then, you, you've used dumpsters. The big problem with that is that size dumpster is a ten yard dumpster, you cannot use a twenty yard dumpster, you've tried in the past. But with that slope there and the weight of the dumpster, the. But with that slope there and the weight of the dumpster, the drivers cannot pick up the weight of the dumpster at that, that slope with it full of sludge. So they keep it level with what's there and they've been kind of making it work with ten yards. But that's also why they have to operate every single day, sometimes they get two dumpsters in a day, uh just to keep things moving. So here's a picture of a new press, as you can see, uh the left side is much taller. It has a lot more capacity, so rather than running it for thirty-five, forty hours a week, you could run it at half that time. Or another uh product we're looking at with the operators is a new screw press. So uh it's a different technology, different type of approach, uh accomplishes the same thing, has different pluses and minuses. One of the big plus is that it has a very small footprint, which is nice. Um, we've been talking to the operators about both of them. Your operators have been to plants and the manufacturers, at least of the, well, manufacturers for both the products. Um, in the last year or two, so this is a, a thing they are familiar with and we need to make some decisions on which, which product to use. Um, going forward, second, second.
Tom, can I ask at that point, is that?
Yeah, sorry, I took a breath.
Was there a third option that was the centrifuge, we've ruled that out now?
Yes. So. Good question. So, yes, we can technically still use a, a centrifuge. Uh, there are some pluses and minuses. Uh, we think the energy usage of a centrifuge is a lot more than a screw press.
Okay.
Um, for your application, a centrifuge doesn't offer too many more advantages than a screw press. Between those two, I think that the screw presses is a lot better if you're just comparing, you're saying, I don't want a screw press at all. Then I would weigh the centrifuge versus the belt press.
And the screw press was, we had one here hooked up at the plant and did it.
Yes, you had it there, it was a pilot test, the gentleman came in here in front of the council, uh talked to you about it.
Okay.
So yes, you have had a pilot test. Do I have any, oh, I had to mention a little bit later. Uh, but yes, you did have a pilot test for that equipment.
Thank you.
Um, major obstacles with the upgrade is limited space for your site, you don't have a lot of open space around it. You're flood, you're against a creek that floods, uh regulatory difficulties, uh project scope disco- uh decisions and project costs. And I got through those and that would kind of wrap it up. Um, limited space. Here's a overall view of your treatment plant site, as you can see, there's not a ton of t- uh green grass. If I.
Can you hold that a second?
Yeah.
So would the, the round cylinders that are concrete currently and filled with weeds, wouldn't they come out of there?
This one?
Yes.
Yes.
So we would take that away and, and use that space?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
So out of this whole site here, you have, I don't have my finger. Uh, this green space here, but it's up against your control building and a lot of stuff needs to flow by gravity. So it's difficult to have stuff to flow from here over to there and then back to the other side. Um, we looked at this green space here, but it's a rat's nest of a hundred years of piping. So everything from your control building, power, everything else goes in thi- this grass area here. And then we also looked at this green space here. Uh, we were looking at maybe taking down the pavilion and putting something over here. Problem with that is this is the flood zone. Um, the, what do you call that? The, the striped area is the hundred year floodplain. So as you can see, it takes up all that green space by the pavilion. Uh, bottom right corner is the uh how high the flood level has gotten. There's two times in the last ten years when I was there, you can see, that's maybe five feet up the fence. So five feet up the fence, it actually matched exactly where that hundred year line is. Uh, as you can see, your um building right here is your sludge building. Your hun- huh, your sludge building is in a hundred year floodplain and yes, you did get a foot or two of water in that building. Uh, your, your pump station here was four feet underwater, the doors were closed. The new door, when we did our, when we did the renovation, we made it a floodproof door. So it, it's locked in, watertightish, um the operators can't get in there until the flood level recedes.
Question, isn't there elevated tanks that you showed before?
Yes.
That we put it above, above?
So you can put it in the floodplain.
You can or can't?
You can, you have to go through FEMA permitting for.
If they're above the level.
You have to keep it above.
Alright.
Um, there's difficulties of access to it.
Sure.
Um, and then also you want it to be adjacent to your, your flow in your process. So we were looking at uh replacing your headwork, uh headworks building, which is right here.
Yeah.
So to me, it would be perfect to put it here and elevate it some. Uh, since gr- uh sewage flows into the plant by gravity, it's a little difficult to elevate that because. It's already coming in at the elevation that it's coming in, so you might need to pump it or do something else. Um, kind of pivoted on that and looking at reusing the existing headworks with doing some in- interior renovations. But yeah, you did call out, this to me is by far the most optimum space. I want to build everything new uh important in there. Um, here's a uh picture of that tank. You can see in the bottom right corner of the concrete of that tank, it is falling apart. The operators use it sometimes to put sludge in there. Uh, since we're building a new sludge tank, they won't need to do that anymore and that, that tank's going to be gone. Um, looking at putting, if you can't read it. But these were your three SBR tanks, that was your main treatment plant process. We're in the fourth tank here to get you the additional capacity to increase the rating from one and a half to two MGD. The next tank uh adjacent right to it, right here is sludge. So that would just be, and on a similar uh concrete shaped tank, but it would be for sludge, not for, for your process at all. Uh, we'd be either getting rid of or repurposing your existing uh de-watering building here and building a new de-watering building here. As well as putting whatever else we, we can get in there. So I don't have a layout of that building to know exactly how much space we need. Uh, one thing we do need to discuss is if you could, like, here's the fence line right here in the driveway. You can see how the, the corner clipped up, I don't know how much space we need or, or if we can move that fence line, if you still need that driveway. I, I don't need the answer, I'm just going to just actually start bringing up these questions. Uh, of what we can do to help make this uh a little bit, make more sense. Uh, major obstacles, uh regulatory. On the left side is the uh your fecal chloroform. The um violations that you had in the last year or two. Um, you see it's a notice of violation from DEP. So we had to respond with a new procedure of agn chlorine to it and maintaining it, emptying. Um, your UV tanks every couple of weeks to check on it, try to stay on top of the maintenance while we buy some time until we build a new system. For now, DEP has accepted that. If we take too long to start with the upgrade, then they're not going to accept that anymore and we'll have to pull that part of the project forward. Uh, all these things interact with each other, so pulling one part forward creates some other complications. On the right side, I know you can't read any of those numbers, but um. For the plant upgrade, we did contact DEP and DRBC to find out what would the new limits be on your treatment plant upgrade. So the thing that came back um with the biggest change is your ammonia limit. Today, your ammonia limit is one hundred and eighty-two pounds per day. So as long as you discharge below that every day, you're in compliance. We asked DEP, we said, okay, you have one eighty-two, if we're upgrading the plant by like twenty-five percent, what do we get? Do we get two hundred? They came back and said, no, you get one fifty-eight. So you get less than you have today with more capacity. DRBC was much stricter than DEP. DRBC came back with thirty-seven. So with the upgrade and what you're currently discharging today. Um, that's part of the reason why we have to do some of the work that we're talking about, uh to meet that much lower limit. Um, I, I won't go into why it's so low, uh just really quick. They look at when you, in nineteen ninety, when you had a brand new plant and not too much flow, what you actually discharged in the stream. And they said, oh, you only discharged like thirty pounds a day into the stream back in nineteen ninety, so you should be able to. You'd no, no impact on the stream, so that's what they held you to. Not what you're authorized to do today, not what you've been doing for the last thirty-five years. They held you back to what you actually did di- discharge years ago. Um, and then uh scope decisions. So this is a thing I touched on a little bit of, some decisions need to be made. Some things you've already consented to with the five thirty-seven update, you're already obligated by DEP, they're essential. Um, you, you have to proceed with those, others are things that you strongly recommend. Another things are pure, purely optional, but just makes sense if you're doing a substantial project. Uh, so just to go over a couple of those things, so you know what I'm talking about. Um, but each of these need a decision to be made and a look to the council or someone to, to provide that feedback. Um, I, I can with the operators, but for example, the first one is replace a thirty-five old, year old electric generator. Picture there is your electric generator, it's not this big, it's the size of an RV. So price of it is ish four hundred thousand dollars ish. Um, do you replace a thirty-five year old, four hundred thousand dollar electric generator that's currently working, but could fail at any time? That, that's a, a decision to be made. Um, the second one is the concrete tanks. You have the existing concrete tanks, we have exposed aggregate, you could put coatings on it to extend the life of your existing. You can also put coatings on your brand new tanks that you're building to make sure that they last as, as long as possible. Coatings are not cheap, so it's a, a value decision, uh if you want to spend the money for that. Number three is uh building an aerobic digester. So your sludge disposal costs are about four hundred thousand dollars a year. It's your largest cost that you have at the plant. We can reduce that and reduce that substantially, but you'd have to spend a couple million dollars on building a new process. Is that something that you want to do? Um, number three, uh number four, we talked about the de-watering building, what do we do with that building if we're going to abandon it? Do we pay to fix it so they can at least use it as storage space or, or do you demolish it? And the last one is your SBR tanks, so those process tanks, that, that's raw sewage in there that you're blowing bubbles in and aerating. So there's smell that comes off of that. You're in the borough, you have residents nearby, you're not a, you don't have a luxury of a plant in the middle of rural, you know, Spoco County. There are order issues from time to time, do you want to install a cover to address that issue? You do have a cover on part of your tanks. Not your main process, but your initial uh tanks, you did put a cover due to order issues in the past. So here's an example of some questions that we've looked for some um input on, on what you want to proceed with. Um, and then project cost. I have here an estimated cost for everything, which I, I did hold to hear, because I know as soon as everyone hears a number, like, I, I lose you then, because. You know, the wheels start turning, trying to figure out how, how, how we're going to do this, how we're going to pay this. Um, we have roughly fifteen to twenty million, obviously that can change as uh scope changes. Uh, the sources of that would be borough funds, I, I know you have some money saved up for it, not that much. But, but you do have money saved up tapping fees. You're uh creating five hundred thousand gallons per day of additional capacity. You get tapping fees for that to recoup for it. There's grants, you've had s- some success with your two million dollar grant that you just got. There's certainly grants and, and low interest or no interest loans available for it. Or possibly a bond issue if you uh get money on any of those avenues. Do I have any questions on that one, because I feel like that's a strong one. Did, did I scare anyone there? Okay.
I, I will ask a question, like, you know, the one point five to two.
Million gallons per day.
Is that, is going to two substantial for, you know, X amount of years or is?
So, we did the five thirty-seven plan and the big part of that was to answer that question. So we looked at how many additional con- uh connections you would anticipate in the next five, ten, twenty and ultimate. At that time, the answer we got was five hundred for you. Um, Allen Township had a number, I don't recall it offhand, but we also had it for them as well. So that was the scope of it, of figuring out all those future connections. Now, to talk about Allen Township, and I, I do have a section on them, I will get there. Um, but after we uh adopted the plan, next month, a developer comes in that no one ever heard of. No one planned that they were going to do anything and says, hey, I want to build something here, so that would be, that, that would have to come into that. Um, and a big thing too, I, I'd like to mention is, we always talk about treatment plant capacity is uh one and a half million gallons per day, that's one component, it's flow. There's many other things going on there, um many other things that could be exceeding capacity, but that's, that's the easiest thing to point to. Um, but there are a lot of the things that you can be overloaded in, and then obviously proof is included if you're not discharging or, or meeting your, your permits. Then that, that's a problem in itself. Um, work that we did already is we did a site survey. We converted your nineteen twenty plans, the buildings and structures uh to AutoCAD, so we can work within those buildings, so we can lay out equipment and piping. We've met with manufacturers, your operators have met with the manufacturers, they've gone to some of their facilities, they've looked at other plants, they've looked at. At the all the equipment that we're considering. We've pilot tested, we mentioned that you had the gentleman in here talk to you about the, the screw press that you pilot tested. And we got the, the preliminary effluent limit, so that's our, what the plant needs to be designed to achieve. So now there's no more unknowns from regulatory for, for that, leave it up to other unknowns from them. Um, the n- next steps coming up is final selection of equipment. Do we go with a screw press or do we go with a belt press? Uh, things like that need to be uh decided, so we can move forward with the actual design of it. Uh, project scope decisions, whether we replace the electric generator or not, uh preparing the plans and specs. DEP and DRBC permits, the permits aren't too bad for this scope of work. Um, there's uh only a couple that you have to go through. Obviously, financing can be a hurdle, um and then go out to bid. We plan on having it ready for bid in about twenty-four months. Construction for a treatment plant of this size and that scope of work would typically be about eighteen months. And the last part, uh the, the plant is the uh Allen Township. I, I know I've heard so many times, uh how many EDUs do we have left to sell? And, and not even to the, the township, every municipality I talk to, they always want to know how many EDUs do I have? Um, just to talk about Allen uh really quick is in nineteen ninety. Uh, when you did your treatment plant upgrade, there were zero EDUs. You did not build your upgrade saying, hey, Allen Township's going to be a, a big user of ours. You built an extra capacity and maybe that was in mind, but there was nothing allocated for them at that time. Since then, you sold them almost seventeen hundred EDUs and committed to a, a few hundred more. As far as projects that have been approved or EDUs that you sold that they're not fully using yet. Um, so how many EDUs do you have left to sell them? The answer, and no one likes this answer, is what is your maximum three month of flow? That's your, the actual answer from DEP. You can sell as much capacity as you want, as long as you're not exceeding the average flow capacity of your plant for three months in a row. The reason why that's difficult is because that little scatter plot on the left side is your monthly flow. So some months, you're way below that line, you're half that line. And then other months, you're even above it for individual months. So as soon as you go three months in a row above it, that's when you have to um start instituting the policy. Of how, how to address that. So since it is flow, it doesn't necessarily mean that you, you're in a moratorium. You just need to come up with a plan of how you're going to address it. You see, there's two tiny little dots next to each other, um that was twenty eighteen above the, the red line. If you had a third month uh above it, then you would have been in a problem then. So even though you have had connections since twenty eighteen, you've sold more since then, you haven't been over for three months. You could have been there if it rained some more. Um, the bottom right is the way I showed you before, the flow at the um, of those two wet months and those two dry months at the pump station. That's the flow of your treatment plant. So your flow at treatment plant for those two months earlier this year were one point three, one point four million, and then the dry months was point six. So half of what your plant treated for those months, if not more, w- was just groundwater. And then uh finally, just to circle back, uh we're on, doing an upgrade to address the a- agent infrastructure, the tanks that are a hundred years old. Uh, getting in compliance for now and in the future, every five. Uh, getting in compliance for now and in the future, every five years, you get a new M P S department, there's new requirements on it. Including the department that you got in January, so there's new things that need to be upgraded or improved, I don't wanna use the word upgrade, improved, uh, to meet the stricter limits each year. Uh, as as well as create additional capacity. Number two, I'd just like to, just remind you too about your collection system, please don't forget about it. Be, you know, hopefully a bit of position for the next hundred years, uh, to go through that, it it does take a lot of time and money, but it doesn't get done if it doesn't get done. And three, decisions need to be made, as far as, uh, what items we wanna include in the the treatment plant upgrade. And, uh, continued effort i- is needed to pursue funding, hopefully we can get some substantial grants and assistance for for a project of this scope. And, um, that that's, that's my last slide, so. I know, I know it's a lot, but you you don't have me coming here often, so I I want to at least touch upon everything, I I know, uh, you got a lot of things going on.
Well, just so you know, it's definitely not on the back of our mind about sludge, we bring it up every morning.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll say it's not on the back of our mind at all.
I I I do appreciate that.
I do like what you're, you presented here. I know myself, I have so many questions I could add, answer, and I don't know if this is the time, but I would like to say, we need to schedule more with the committee meeting with you and come back to having those kind of questions about a group to pr- bring back to council. Instead of opening it up for questions now unless they have, but I do believe we need to schedule just for the SOAR committee with you to have more of a co- contact, and obviously the borough manager and stuff like that.
Okay, and that's kind of my expectation too, is to not, to to touch upon everything, but not to to go into everything, but certainly, if there's any other high level questions.
At what point did, would you bring the Valley Planning Commission in to review the whole process? Don't they have to be engaged in in terms of the review of a project, what it's it's impact on, um, Act five thirty seven?
Well, we did get the Act five thirty seven approval already, so they did review it on the ad scope.
Right, but then. They did review that, okay.
So the scope of that was to upgrade the plant from one and a half to two, the scope of that did include your new EDUs, the scope of that did include most of the equipment that we're talking about here.
Okay. Okay, and so if you, my other question in regard to like the headworks plan, right? It basically is falling apart, is what you're pretty much telling us, and but yet, so if you rebuild that there, and it sounds like it's gonna need to be made significantly bigger because the equipment is going to be larger, taller, wider, whatever, um, but you're gonna be building it in a floodplain, aren't we gonna be?
Well, no, that that's the building that I had up where you had your.
You're gonna, so you're moving the whole, the head of the site, you're moving that up closer to that, to where the, where the circle was, that's, that's gonna be gone.
Yes, I would want to. Right, so fortunately sewage goes into that tank by pump.
So but that's, so then you're gonna have to pump, you're gonna have to.
Right, we but you already do pump it.
Okay.
It it's part of the the clean water, or where it gets cleaned, flows mostly through gravity.
Okay.
All the sewage, um, when it's in your aeration tanks, it exits those tanks by pump, by pump.
Okay, okay, I'm part of that committee, so I imagine I'll have lots more questions.
Do you assist us in these grants and these funding and financing, or is that more for our finance department here?
Some of both, um, a lot of it I think would be eh, with your finance department, if you have the relationships and certain re- decisions.
Because I. We, several of us sit on the Water Authority also, and we experienced that their engineers also helped us with financing through Penn Vest and all that. And interest rates are at sometimes zero percent for fifteen years, they're incredible to help the infrastructure of a borough. So that's the kind of stuff that they also helped us, I guess you wanna say, um, navigate through.
Right.
Do you assist us that?
Yes, um, and I think assist is probably the best word, we don't normally run that process, but we work with you on that process, if that makes sense. Is kind of equal with, uh, the finance people that you have and, um, worked for the Penn Vest, I know for many years, the, it was one or two percent interest and the market interest rate was one or two percent, so there wasn't a lot of interest in it. Then obviously twenty twenty happened, and then interest rates went up, and now there is interest in it.
So, to piggyback on that question, you don't have any, um, like personnel in your organization that has any kind of relationship with like Penn Vest? You don't, you would be expecting our borough to be the the main contact for Penn Vest. I sit on the same board with with Mr. Classic, and so it seemed to be our experience, our understanding, that they actually had some person, like, some individuals in their, um, that engineering firm that specifically were contact, had contacts at Penn Vest and worked with them to obtain that, it wasn't necessarily the engineer, like, rather just some other individuals, that that was their role, um, to to help access funding. I, you know, to to think that, I'm I'm sure there are grants out there, but somehow I do not believe that we're gonna find ten million dollars worth of grants, so.
I I did get ten million dollars for a treatment plant, I mean, it was a hundred years ago.
You did? You'll be my hero if you could do that.
Yeah.
So, but it is, so back to that question, do you, you don't, there's nobody in your, in your.
Uh, oh, oh, that's who.
Look into that for us, could could you? Cause I remember we were given a name or two in in terms of Penn, uh, at Penn Vest, um, just because of, we haven't been talking about this for a year or two already. Um, and sometimes when you go to some of the conferences out there, there are those individuals at some of those stands that like to tell you, and Penn Vest is one of the places or one of the organizations represented, and, you know, we'll talk about their ability to to offer low interest loans to to boroughs and municipalities. But I was wondering also, as Mr. Classic said, if if we were gonna get that support from you, um, because there's so much information that needs to come from you in terms of what it is you're going to be doing, and all those costs, and so it seemed like
Yes.
you are the predominant one, and we're just here to pay the bill and make sure that it's, you know, done to the satisfaction and the need, the needs of our our borough. And not just the needs now, but the needs for the future, I mean, this is what this is about, this is not about, you know, twenty twenty five, it's about, you know, twenty fifty and beyond.
Yeah.
We're we're building for the future.
Yeah.
Um. So I just, well, I, you'll look into that question for us, perfect, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. You're welcome, and thank you again.
Well, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
And it was, it was a great presentation, thank you.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, very much appreciated.
So we can now move on to item number six on the agenda. Consider requests for permission to advertise for fire training property.
Uh, since the borough was awarded, uh, last month, a hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty three dollars for the L S A Northampton Lehigh County grant for the fire department's training facility. It is time to advertise for fire training prop that will be used at the site. The advertisement was included in the packets, it was drawn up by, uh, the turn of school.
We have a motion to advertise for the fire training property, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Canop, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the Northampton Exchange Club.
The Northampton Exchange Club is seeking approval to recognize Marty Fellows' contributions to the Borough, to the Club's Community Days Fair. They're requesting to dedicate the band shell and municipal park in Marty's name. This would be to erect two signs, one above the front office door and the other on the back wall. The sign designs are included in your packets.
Thank you.
With with regard to this, I have a suggestion. Borough Council may want to consider tabling this for a period of time to discuss, to discuss whether or not this is something that Borough Council wants to do, uh, whether you wanna set precedence and so on and so forth, so it might make sense to not address this today, but table it and address it at some later time. So what is interested, one could make a motion to table.
Do I have a motion to table this, uh, request from the Exchange Club?
I make a motion to table, um, with more discussion. Is there gonna be a, how are we gonna move forward, just so that we do discuss it?
For right now, you would table it to to take it off this agenda, and then you could always address it at any point later.
Okay, so that, yeah, that'll be fine.
Motion made by Mr. Classic, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Canop, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider application for twenty twenty six hotel tax grant.
Uh, I will say, after getting some more information, the numbers are gonna be a little different, so when I say them, they'll be slightly different than the ones that are in the actual management report. Uh, so the borough is looking to apply for the twenty twenty six hotel tax grant. We are asking for nine thousand dollars, and the borough will be responsible to match third, three thousand five hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. This will be for a project that I've been working on for a few years, uh, this will be for a nine-hole disc golf course next to the softball fields down in Canal Park. I don't know why I didn't put that in there. The funds will be used to purchase net signage and materials for the tee pads.
Do I have a motion to apply for the twenty twenty six hotel tax grant?
Make your motion.
Motion by Mr. Canop, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Questions, according to the map, Brian.
Yes.
It shows that it's a side of a, a parking lot, is that correct, or am I?
Yes, it is directly in front of the parking lot next to the softball fields down at Canal Street Park.
So the parking lot wouldn't, uh, have some kind of liability issue if these go around, or?
It it's short enough that it shouldn't, uh, there'll be signs that would be posted, um, throughout the area.
Okay, no difference than a softball hit, I mean.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, I understand.
So they're not throwing them two hundred yards then, right?
No, I think the longest one, I I look at my map real quick, would be be the few that are farther away from the softball field. The two, on, if you're looking at it on the south side of it, and those are, I don't even believe, two hundred feet.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Reports from committees on the items, administration and finance, Mr. Classic.
Uh, there were one hundred and forty nine live streaming views on June nineteenth at the council meeting. Uh, Larry Oberly conducted a tour of the Atlas Cement Museum for the Borough of Northampton for the Steel Workers Archives Organization. They have made a hundred dollar donation to the museum, end of report.
Thank you, Building Land and Recreation, Ms. Alderman.
Thank you, a big thank you to the Joe Summer Memorial Golf Tournament for their donation of one thousand eggs to the borough to be used at next year's Easter hunt. I'm assuming they're cooked and in the refrigerator or their plastic. Um, and the Community Days Fair will be held from July sixteenth and the nineteenth in the Borough's Municipal Park. Firework fireworks will be held on Saturday evening, July nineteenth at ten fifteen, end of report.
Thank you, ma'am, Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you, uh, the planning commission will meet on Wednesday, July ninth at seven P M with, uh, two items on the agenda. The first will be a continuation of May's meeting with the Environmental Planning and Design. The second will be regarding the lot at seven ninety nine Smith Lane, which is the former, uh, recycling facility. Uh, Smith Lane LLC will be looking to, uh, for preliminary and final plan approval for developing the property into a three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred feet foot warehouse facility. Uh, end of report.
Thank you, Fire and Health, Mr. Canop.
Thank you. Time is running out to sign up for the Fire Cadet Summer Camp. The camp runs from July seventh to the eleventh, with graduation on the twelfth. It is available to all Northampton Borough residents and non-residents, ages eleven to fifteen, at no cost. End of report.
Thank you, sir, Community Center, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, the Community Center held a monthly meeting on Tuesday, June seventeenth. Last week, the Community Center purchased a new ice maker. At the end of May, a long crack was repaired in the wooden tile flooring in the main hall, end of report.
Thank you, sir, Public Works, Mr. Classic.
Thank you, uh, Public Works will be repairing portions of the road on both First Street and Washington Avenue this week. An internal application that are posted for new employees interested in transferring to the SOAR plant, the deadline for the application is Monday, July fourteenth.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to reports from council members, I'll start with Mr. Canop.
Oh, I'm very glad to see that cleanup at the Starst- Starstreak Fire at the Borough, I see they cleaned up the homes that were destroyed, looks very good. And, uh, also, people around the neighborhood in our ward, seems like they're doing a lot better with their weeds and grass cleanup. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Classic.
A couple of things, uh, we are having a roundtable discussion, uh, for the Tri-Borough situation, just to announce that, that it will be out there next week, just so that you know that we are moving forward. Uh, congratulations to the fire department for the great work that yous are doing for the cadet class, I just, again, I think that's something that's put us definitely so far above other boroughs that I hear, what we're doing for our fire departments and how we support them. Again, great presentation, uh, on the SOAR plant, I know this is gonna be a huge undertaking for the next year, but it's something that our infrastructure needs. It it is something that cannot be overlooked, I mean, I don't care if you say a hundred years, thirty five years, but it's tomorrow that a generator could break. The rain that we're having today could cause the sludge to go up through the roof, or costs, or pumps not even working. Well, we, again, we talk about taking for granted when you flush your toilet or turn on the water, you have to understand that that stuff is something that's so vital to our community and to the borough, and we have to make sure we fix the infrastructure of it. There is some grant money out there, which we will go into a lot of detail through that committee. Uh, the other things I wanted to talk about were, um, where are we at with the movies in the Parkway? Are it parked, are we doing that, are we not?
Yeah, um, we, yeah, we still are, um, with the vandalism that occurred on a couple occasions, we were kinda waiting for repairs.
Okay. Okay.
Um, we'll be ordering the, um, projector pretty much any day now.
Okay.
And then just waiting on receipt of the concession stand from the Exchange Club.
Okay.
Which, so the hope would be to start, uh, it actually kinda worked out a little better, so you could start at the end of July, beginning of August, and then kinda run through the fall season, and then kind of end around Halloween, and kind of that way extend it, and then not have to compete as much with other municipalities, because we'll be able to do it for a few months and then to the fall too.
Okay, very good. Um, big issue that's coming up in my, in more so the third ward than any other place maybe, but the street repairs have to get rectified somehow. These holes are are literally popping up more and more, and the stuff is, so hopefully that'll be down in the discussion about street repairs, I've had numerous calls.
Yep, um. Thanks to, uh, kind of preparing for this conversation, uh, Public Works, um, Andrew Marson dropped off a list of all recommendations for paving for twenty twenty five for, um, all the different wards, all four wards and a few parking lots. Um, we just have to have conversations about which ones for this year, and then, uh, this that would no doubt grow in future years, but a, definitely a place to kinda go from.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that'd be good to report. Swimming pool concession stand, is that ran by our borough or an outside service?
Outside service.
Can we just ask them to please inform, um, the patrons in line that they're closing twenty minutes early, a half hour earlier, whenever they're closing? Because I guess last week, several people were very upset that they stood in line for fifteen, twenty minutes, and then they just literally said, the grill's closed, we're not taking any more orders. But they should've announced that, that people weren't wait in line for food, and then they just, you know, closed up on them. Think they had to still follow some directions from us. A couple of the SOAR, not just a couple, I think the SOAR drains in general throughout the borough need to get looked at about cleaning out, because there's flooding. Again, the the rain that we've had now is ex- extreme, but there is a lot of debris in these SOAR drains, and it's just backing up. I just noticed coming here tonight, on Lobach Avenue was very bad, but again, the SOAR drain was probably completely blocked with leaves and stuff like that.
Yep, you got it.
So, appreciate that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canop.
Oh, Fourth of July, happy Fourth of July to everybody, be safe and happy with that, so, sorry I missed out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, is there any updates from last month on the sweeper yet?
Um, we are still looking at all possibilities, um, it's, I'm kind of actually running through some ideas that we probably all should kind of talk about. Not here, but, um, some ideas and, but, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars is a hefty price. So, um, not looking all that great for this year, but, uh, some ideas for next year. But we're still looking, so if anything comes up, we are definitely still looking at possibilities for the season.
Okay, and with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July, and hopefully everybody can count the ten fingers on July fifth, end of my report.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need some?
I um, to go along with the sewer drains, I, you know, I think that, again, if we could just ask homeowners to be aware of maybe picking up some of the litter that's in the street and and kind of knowing, again, that um the responsibility of the weeds up to the curb are are theirs um and cutting those down and not blowing your grass into the street. Um you know, tonight's presentation didn't completely touch that, but that going into our sewer system is just one more thing we have to remove. So um I think that times that we did things in the past, we can't really do it anymore environmentally, it's not, it's not good. So um I do really see a lot around town and um, you know, there's, there is just trash. Now, people are throwing it out of their car or what, but if we could just be a little bit more aware and if it's in front of your own home, please, please, I ask you to just take that opportunity and maybe pick it up and make sure our houses look a little fresher. Um but that's it too, I wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, a safe Fourth of July, and hopefully somewhat quiet Fourth of July. My dogs don't like fireworks. Um but that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Stone.
Yes, thank you. Uh I wanted to thank Tom Duffey for your presentation, um you know, it's a lot to absorb, um sure. Um but uh it 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 is important uh for us to uh to do going forward, so. Um again, thank you for that, I wanted to thank Greg France for um, you know, running the junior cadet program over there. And it's uh, it's really exciting actually to see it grow the way it is, uh so again, I wanted to thank you for that. Uh the Community Center, they they fixed the floor, are they still planning on replacing?
Um I think the plan was is that they feel with the new company that came in, they can get a few more years out of it, hopefully, yes.
Okay, so it's not pressing.
It's not, it's pressing, the craft they company that came in would felt, and they could also refinish it. Yep, they did refinish it, yes. They did, yes, so.
I guess that's good news.
It is, yeah.
Okay, uh I too was gonna ask about about the the roads. Um we still, we we still have contractor bids for uh Barrington and Kingston, is that, are we, is that still open?
We do, that's another conversation we need to have, because the price came in a lot higher than we originally anticipated. So we will need to kinda make a decision on, do we wanna maybe potentially do half of it this year and then half of it next year? Um do we wanna just wait till next year and then just do the whole thing, but then plan for spending a lot more? Um so then, we we have a bid, we have the, from Co-Stars, so we just kinda need to make decisions. Or put it out for bids, see if we can get more prices, maybe get better prices. Or put it out for bids, see what you get, but. We could get better prices, but potentially you could get higher prices, so.
Okay. Um also the code uh, you can report for June compliance, zero percent, that's uh type O, I'm guessing?
That's gotta be a type O.
I know, we were a lot, a lot closer than that uh last month.
Yeah. Yeah, there's that, yeah, that's what I, I forgot.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I will get the correct number and then I'll email it out to everybody.
Okay, great. Um and I think that disc uh disc golf is actually a great idea, I mean, a relatively low cost of bar, so, yeah, I'm in favor. Uh I think that's up there, end of report.
Thank you. Um I had one thought before I begin to go down to you there.
Sure.
I wanted to thank Tori and Andrea for a good job at the pool. Uh I've been there a couple of times and it's been challenging, to say the least, because of the weather and trying to stay open. And now another incident where, you know, they shut down the food grill. But it's been very challenging and they've done a very, very good job. Everybody knows what they're doing and and how uh to handle the pool, I appreciate that. Also, I would like to know the status of the no parking signs on borough property after fine, what what are we doing with that?
Yep, they are, pretty much, we came to the final wording of what we wanted to be. Um we were kinda playing around ideas on stuff that we wanted to add to it, um because the signs are gonna just say the ordinance number and that this is the maximum fine and that tolling. And so we kinda played around with the idea, since it doesn't, it just says what the ordinance number is and that what's gonna be enforced, that we kinda played around the idea if we wanted to add any additional information to it. Um and so now, um once uh on Monday, we're actually gonna order, so.
Okay. Uh that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. May I, may I ask one thing? I think we need to make a motion also, if, I don't know if we, when we do this, for the hiring of employees.
You do.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that would give the.
If I may, before you do that.
Okay.
Under the new rules for the sunshine law, whatever you have an executive session, you have to, at the, at the end, during the public portion of the meeting, you have to declare that. Um so I think it's appropriate that we, to declare that we had an executive session, no official action was taken during the executive session. The items that were discussed or the areas that were discussed were real estate as well as uh potential employment issues. Uh and no official action was taken at that point, but now we're now in the open session and now we can make a motion. So I apologize for cutting you off.
No problem, I'm glad you said that. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the, looking to hire a position for the borough through the office and code enforcing and things like that.
So I believe what you're asking is you're asking for a motion, or your motion is, to authorize the borough manager to take steps to advertise and to potentially hire, with coming back to council, of course, at the appropriate time, a employee that can address the uh borough's needs.
Very well said, will that increase our cost to them?
I'm just adding that in there. Okay, thank you.
You can put that in there.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mister Stone, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You've been authorized to whatever, okay.
Thank you. Move forward.
Thank you. Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Well, with tomorrow being Fourth of July, to Mister Donahue's point, if you start this weekend with ten fingers, please end the weekend with those ten fingers. We will have plenty of police patrols out for your public safety as, according to law, there's really no place in the borough where legally fireworks can be used, so be safe. Next, Mister France, to your fire department, uh the evolution of your training program with the cadets has been phenomenal. And uh as I go to mayoral meetings and everything, I I do mention it and there is always an interest in hearing what you're doing. And uh this year's uh mayor's conference is in two weeks, I'll make sure I bring that up again. So expect a few phone calls, because it is truly one of the best laid out that the state has, because I don't know anyone else who's really doing this, so. Kudos to you and to bringing everyone together and just adding year after year to the proficiency and professionalism of what you're doing for the youth and uh keeping them out the streets. So to you and to the fire department, congratulations. And then Mister Guzuzian, good to see you again and uh thank you for the solicitors we've had. I understand that Penelope kid really made something out of himself after he left here, so thank you for that, it's always good to see you again. So everybody, happy Fourth of July, be safe, a- and again, enjoy the holiday, it's what America's all about, thank you.
Attorney Guzuzian, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing further, thank you, good to be here though.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh Mister Sorenzit.
You know, the only thing I have is, uh wish I could say more about it, um the loss of Dalton, um he's more than just an employee. He was a son, um a brother and a good friend, so he'll be missed.
Thank you for saying that.
Uh thank you, very sad, thank you. Mister Earl Scott.
Yeah, to uh kinda echo off Jerry's point, um I didn't know Dalton as well as Jerry did, but uh he was a great member of the borough. He was a great employee, working for two different departments and working so hard every single day when he was here and when he wasn't here, he was still doing the same fight. And uh he will be sorely missed for the borough and we are so thankful that he was able to grace us with his presence for the five years that he did. Um Tom, also thank you, I feel like I've never talked to you more than I have over the last few months, and I have no doubt that will continue for years to come, um so don't go anywhere. Um but no, thank you truly, um that was even more in-depth than I knew you would do, so thank you, I really appreciate it and I kinda, I look forward to, uh three, four years from now when this is done and we can move on to the next thing in the process. It's hard to ca- it's hard to kinda believe to say three or four years, but in that time, I'm sure there'll be more pump stations, there'll be more other things that we're gonna be doing, so. Um thank you for all the support and really helping us out along the way. Um Barry, thank you as well. Um I always get excited this time of year, because to see how happy the people are to see the photos, to see the videos and I know Keith gets so thrilled and to have him come back at the end of the day and talk about stuff and how highly everyone speaks of it and I can't say thank you enough. I can't wait to hear when you go to two weeks and then a month program and. I I can't, but maybe not, I don't know. Um but truly thank you as well. Um kinda picking backing off uh Councilman Stone, yeah, this uh the disc golf project is something that I've been working on for about three years now and then I waited for the garden to be done. Um it's really, I think, gonna bring a new set of life to an area of the park that's never used. Um since it was closed all those years ago, to actually have some activity in there with constant patrol, with people watching out for things, watching out for vandalism. And then just bringing tourism and economic growth hopefully to the town and bringing another reason for people to go to Canal Street besides just the D and L Trail and the river. So I look forward to that. Um our office intern Tori and I have been working on that for the past couple of weeks, trying to really button down the hatches and stuff. We won't know if we get any grant money till December, but um I I think, I I hope it has promise and I hope that we're able to, at this time next year, um Trevor and I will be out there playing every day.
We'll all have to run around too much.
You can walk the whole thing.
Perfect.
Um and like everyone kinda said, happy Fourth of July. Have a great day tomorrow, enjoy, be safe, and try not to think about sewage too much. And that's all I got. Good you just got that now. Wait a minute.
I couldn't believe you said it.
Well, I had to end it sometime, uplifting remark.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Plus, how often is Tom here, I gotta make some.
I know, I know.
Be happy I didn't do a longer joke.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
We know, my reputation.
Yes, yes.
Forgot you were there for two days.
Okay.
It's almost worth.
I need approval to pay the bills. I need a motion.
Motion. Motion.
Uh Mister Donahue, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh Mister Stone, any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh Allied Products, Atlas Machine Welding and Atlas Custom Services, what are those repairs for?
Um Atlas Products, is that the one you s- you said Atlas Products first?
Well, Atlas Machine or?
Atlas Machine, Atlas Machine and Welding is uh was equipment for uh metal equipment for Public Works. Um Atlas Custom Services was, what is four thirty-two, uh stormwater? I forget exactly what that one was for. Uh well, the one that's four thirty-two, why is it drawn up blank?
I don't remember.
Four thirty-two, I think.
No, I don't.
Four twenty-six is stormwater.
Was it possibly the belt filter press?
That would've been, that would've been a sewer, I would've no way. No, that would've been, that would've been, no, this is um, oh man, you stopped me for once, Ron. Uh let me get back to you on that one.
It's six hundred and fifty dollars, just so you know, and then the Axamine?
Axiom, Axim, that's for the sewer plant, that's for chemicals.
That's for chemicals, the seven thousand?
Yes.
Um Buckman's Incorporated Material Supplies?
That one, that one, uh we use Buckman's for both the pool and sewer plant for chemicals, this one is specifically for the sewer plant as well. Sort of chlorate, yep.
Okay, David Heizer Repair?
Uh Police Department.
Okay, Foster and Foster?
Uh that is stuff for our pension. Uh putting up yearly allocations.
Uh Semic, Semic LLC, Lecter?
Oh, uh electricity down at the sewer plant, yeah.
Twenty-one hundred.
The S M, okay. Oh, that, that's, yeah, Stop Meck is for uh sewer plant electricity, that's who they use for electric repair.
Okay. Um that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
Me.
Go ahead.
Um just is this a, is this a new call of nature?
Yes, so.
New, new business?
Well, wait till you know what it means.
I s- I see, I already said it, it's for sludge removal, I can't believe you let that one slide by, Mister Classic.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, so. We. We provide the porta potties for positive amount. We used to use Allstate, um but they were actually cheaper and.
So it's a different kind of?
So it's different sludge.
Different, different sludge, okay, I like.
Different sludge, but the kind that we don't treat.
The kind we don't.
Kind they take away.
Yes, the kind they take away.
Kind they take away.
Yeah, we even have a sewer machine that we can bring and r- lend out, right? If anybody needs it.
We do, portable toilets.
Any other questions?
Uh no, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Uh Mister Canop, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh Mister Donahue, meeting with you.